The agenda is adopted. If any audience member has a desire to speak to a specific agenda item, when we get to that at our time, we would, there's a card in the back you can fill out, hand to Ms. Becky, we would allot you time and opportunity to speak at that time. The next thing we have tonight is the approval of our consent agenda. And as per our habit, we'll read through the consent agenda. And if there's anything that we need to deal with individually, we will do so if required. What we're approving tonight are the regular board meeting minutes of February 21st, 2019, the approval of the study session minutes of March the 14th, 2019. We have approval of bills, $1,717,837.19 for February, and wire transfers of $2,325,782.87 for February. Treasurer Carlson will be joining us shortly, I'm sure. Under personnel, we have a number of items. We are expecting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary School effective February 22, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 6.5 hour per day paraprofessional at St. Peter Middle School effective January 25, 2018. This is a replacement position. We're accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School effective March the 1st, 2019. We are accepting the retirement of a social studies teacher at St. Peter Middle School, Mr. Eric Bowe, effective May 31, 2019. We are accepting the retirement of a physical education teacher at St. Peter Middle School, Laura DeFlumnik, effective May 31, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a food service employee for St. Peter Public Schools effective March the 8th, 2019. We are accepting the retirement of an administrative assistant to the superintendent, maybe, Ms. Becky Bravo, effective May 31, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a school support specialist for St. Peter Public Schools effective March the 6th, 2019. This is a new position created to address the needs of students and families in the district. We are accepting the resignation of a special education teacher at North Elementary School effective May 31, 2019. We are accepting the resignation of a special education paraprofessional at South Elementary effective March 13th, 2019. We are accepting this resignation of an early childhood special education paraprofessional effective March 1, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 6.75 hour per day special education paraprofessional at South Elementary School effective April 8th, 2019. This is a replacement position. And we are accepting the retirement of a special education teacher at South Elementary, Julie Carl Bloom, effective May 31, 2019. We are approving the hiring of a 6.75 hour per day special education paraprofessional at North Elementary School, Mr. Brad Nederreiter, effective March 18th, 2019. This is a replacement position. And we have some diplomas.
We do. We do. I'm requesting that the board awards St. Peter High School diplomas to Kirk Kiesling, Charles Anderson, and Anthony Hansen. After reviewing their course credits and transcripts, they have met all of St. Peter Public Schools' requirements.
If we want to deal with these all together, a motion to approve would be in order.
I saw move.
Second. I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I'd just like to note that Mr. Eric Bowe has been a teacher in this district for 30 years, Laura DeFlumnik has been here for 25 years, and Julie Carl Bloom has served for 21 years in our district. Thank you all. We have motion to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, and the consent agenda is approved. That brings us to our Students of the Month, Ms. Okie.
Well, I'm the only one who didn't go home and change today. And Bea's first comment was, "You're still wearing that?" I did only wear it today, Bea, let's be clear. All right, I have two examples of wonderful students from South Elementary here today, and they are here to help explain a little bit about our PBIS program and our Top 20 program that we do as part of our Star Pride. So you may be wondering who they are, so I'm going to let you tell them what your name is, okay?
Kale Drager. Bea Torres.
All right, and Kale is the son of, oops, just a minute, I had them mixed up here, of Justin and Amanda, pardon, oh, he's got them too, of Justin and Amanda Drager, and Bea is the daughter of Bloss and Nancy Torres. So they are going to help explain a little bit about what the Star Pride and the Top 20 program is. Part of our Positive Behavioral Intervention System is Star Pride, and that is our school, our school-wide program. A positive behavioral system is what we use to develop some common language to help students identify what behaviors are expectations within our building and which ones do we need to maybe work on a little bit. And for the last two years, we've been using a program called Top 20, and it actually helps to teach the students self-control, and it allows them to think about their choices and develop their potentials and make, have wonderful relationships and hopefully help them with their schoolwork as well. So why don't you both come up really close to the microphone, because I have some questions for you, okay? So let's start out, hi Kale, why don't you tell them what is the number one job of Top 20 students?
Help others succeed.
Help others succeed, and what does that look like if you're going to help someone succeed?
To help them do well.
To help them do well. So Bea, if we want to help a classmate, how could we use Top 20 to help them succeed?
Just help them build with each other.
Okay, so what are some things, ways that you help inside your classroom?
Build with my friends.
You help build with your friends. Do you do anything on the playground to help them be successful?
We play with each other.
Okay, and we use kindness on the playground. How about you, Kale, how could we help Mr. Rocco, our custodian?
Don't make a mess in the lunchroom, because then he adds to work very hard to clean it up.
And whose job is it to keep our school clean?
Mr. Rocco.
Yep, and who does he need help from?
Everyone.
Everyone, absolutely. And what are some ways that we could help our teachers?
To do, to do well in class and listen to the speaker, and our mouths should be shut and our hands should be to ourselves.
Does it always work that way? Always? Always? I don't know. And one of the things that Top 20 teaches us is that we all fall below the line sometimes. Sometimes they're by our choices, and sometimes it's just by the way we feel. So if we're feeling sad, would that be an above the line or below the line behavior?
Below.
What if you're sick, Bella? Where would that be?
Below the line.
Yeah, you would fall below the line. Below the line isn't always a choice thing, sometimes it's just the way you're feeling. But what's the most important thing about when you're feeling below the line?
To try to bounce back up above the line.
Right, to try to bounce back up. And we are currently, each month there's a different topic, and this month we are learning about OPOs.
Other people's opinions.
Other people's opinions. And Bea, what do you know about other people's opinions?
Like, somebody says, "I like your hair," and somebody says, "I don't like your hair."
So if they tell you that they don't like your hair, what should we do?
That's their opinion.
That's just their opinion, right. And Kale, what do you know about opinions?
They don't matter.
They shouldn't matter. Other people's opinions do not matter, because what do we need to care about?
Just care about ourselves and other people.
Right, be kind to other people, and we try to make, be proud of ourselves in all that we do. We do have a few incentive programs. Each month we also have usually a school-wide project of some sort that's going on, and if you get caught showing Star Pride, what happens, Bea?
We go, we go back over here and talk again.
Oh, you get to go back? Well, okay, well, we'll talk to these people and see if that's okay. If she does really well, she gets to come back, so, deal?
That's a deal.
I want to do that, too.
You want to do it, too? Okay, why don't you come over here? What are those little square things that we have a big pile of in our box?
Star Pride tickets.
And how, what are some ways that you can get a Star Pride ticket?
By showing Star Pride and being quiet every single day.
Like in the bathrooms and in the other areas. And what happens with those Star Pride tickets, Bea?
They get to go in the bucket.
They go in the bucket, and then what happens every morning?
You draw them from our big, huge glass bucket, and, and you have to announce the people's names that you drew.
Yeah, and we cite them as students who are really showing Star Pride within their bill. And do you have any questions for us on Star Pride? I bet they have some answers. Anything else?
Thank you. Fantastic. Good job, guys. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You can come back in July.
My only question is, I think Ms. Engeldinger should apply that for the seniors.
Just one for two.
Maybe just one.
I see that our student representative is not with us tonight. There is a choir concert up at the high school at 7:30, and we have a number of people in this room that would appreciate going there, so if we seem to be moving briskly through things, there's an incentive to do so. Next thing we have tonight is, we're moving into our action items, and the first thing we're going to do is consider reauthorizing a previously authorized, board-approved referendum using the state statute authority that we have. And Dr. Peterson and Mr. Regner?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, included in your packet is a resolution that provides the board with a five-year extension of authorization of a board-approved levy. That authorization was provided by the Minnesota Legislature, as the board chair mentioned, five years ago in 2014, as the board finance committee in working with administration, administration working with our financial advisors, Spring City Incorporated, certainly in something that we wanted to bring forward to the board were in that window where authorization can occur. It was at the finance committee meeting a few weeks ago that the committee did recommend that it be considered for approval tonight. Tim's here to talk a little bit about some of the details and then see if you have any questions prior to moving forward.
Yep, as Paul mentioned, it's pretty straightforward. Five years ago, the state changed the, kind of the laws and the rules and authorized boards to do $300, at which time our board converted $300. And it's good for a five-year period, at which time the board has to review it again, and if they wish to reauthorize it or just renew it, it's good for another five years. Our window period is basically through March through September, we've got to do this. We thought we might as well just do it early and get it, get it all the way and done, and it'll be good for another five years starting next year. So it's the same as it's been, the levy will not change any because of this, it's $300 per pupil unit. It's a simple resolution, which is in the packet, that just basically extends it for five years.
Thank you. I move the resolution reauthorizing a previously authorized board-approved referendum authority of $300.
Second. And we have a second. Just one comment to add, I believe the first time we did that, we actually reduced the amount of the, of the levy at that time, striking some of it from the books to move on to this particular value. So this is a continuation of what already exists in play. Other comments or clarifying questions for the superintendent or the finance committee? Seeing none, this is a resolution, I'll start with the lady on my left.
Yes, aye.
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 And it's unanimous, the resolution prepares. The next item we have tonight is second reading of Chapter 1, the School District Policies. We have brought this forward in first readings. After second readings, we vote to adopt the changes. Dr. Peterson and Policy Committee Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll turn it over to Ben to see if there are any pieces that need to be addressed by the full board. The committee did meet after the first reading in February, and I believe that there was little input from the public or from fellow board members, which then led to being brought up tonight. So Ben, if you're going to take a tour through the chapter or see if there are any questions?
This is our second reading, are there any questions about it?
No.
No, not, I see.
Not for mine.
Well, then I would move to approve the second and final reading of Chapter 1, School District and miscellaneous policies.
We have some miscellaneous policies in there as well.
Second. We have a second, is there any clarifying questions or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those policies are adopted. You'll be getting new ones to replace in your policy book probably next week. Swimming on through, we are now into our information items tonight, and we have a report from the Native American Advisory Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the board, as John and Bernie come up to the front table, just a short welcome, John has done an exceptional job of spearheading and facilitating our Native American parent group over the last two school years. I believe it was last year he was able to corral Bernie into being the chair, which, guess what? That means Bernie gets to come to a meeting. And so, but we really do appreciate, I've had a chance to sit in on a couple meetings. Bernie is fabulous, she's got experience in working with these committees, and what I really appreciate about her is this is all about getting better and about people understanding each other and working for the common good. So it's great to have you here, John, I know you're going to tee it up and then let Bernie fly, so.
All right, so yeah, it is my honor to work with this committee. As you guys know, the state statute requires that any district with 10 or more Native American students has a parent advisory committee, which serves as an advisory role for the district. And our committee is full of very, very knowledgeable folks like Bernie, who will be able to help us make sure that we're meeting the needs of our Native American students and really all of our students through some of the work. This is our second year, like Dr. Peterson mentioned, and I will introduce Ms. Bernadette Volk, she is our chair, and she's going to talk a little bit about herself and then what we've been up to, and then finally, three recommendations that will kind of lead our work in the years to come with the committee.
Hello, my name is Bernadette Volk, everybody calls me Bernie. I'm married to Matt Volk, I've been up here for 10 years, my mother-in-law's Rosie Volk. We got custody of two of my grandsons November of 2017, that's where I had come in, I think I even started the committee before, before I even got the kids. I knew they were coming, but my sister also lives up here, and she has, you know, a son going to the middle school now. And I come from Wagner, South Dakota, it's basically white native on the reservation kind of committee. We had 600 students, 75% of them are Native Americans, we'd only have one or two graduate. So I was on, it was called the Native American Advisory Board for almost 15 years, all while my kids were going through school. We tried to correct the graduation part of it, and also we would do ceremonies. We had to have it approved to tell the stories on why star quotes were important, why feather ceremonies were important, you know, way back when, when the warriors had to kill or whatever, they would have these little ceremonies. Well, we don't kill no more, you know, if they go off to the military or something, they have ceremonies. But the graduation part, we said was, the education was more important. So you have this little thing with the drums coming in, you know, at the school, and we give them their little plumes or the eagle feathers, and then when they graduate, I'd be standing off to the side, not rapping with their blanket. Just, so when I left and came up here, I had 14 students graduate and stuff.
Great.
So it worked out really well, you know, just because we had an Indian school 12 miles away. Their criteria wasn't as high to play sports, so that's where we'd lose a lot of our students, is where they go nowhere near ready for college from that school, you know, they even had law students get them, saying that they were honorary students and this thing, they tried to go to college and they weren't. So all my kids finished, they started in 12th grade and went to, I mean, kindergarten to 12th grade at the community school where I was on the board, and so it helped them a lot in their education. So when I come up here and got on this, you know, I've always been, education for different races reduces racism, if you understand why they do things, where they come from, you know, educate them that, since I've been up here, they have a thing of alcoholics, lazy, you know, not doing anything. I've also became familiar with this, I mean, I'm in our St. Peter, which I also started, moved into another one, which is Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation, you know, to invite immigrants to come in and where to go and how to get help and whatever, and I said, "What about the people who've already been here? Don't feel welcome," and stuff, and hide because of the 38 plus 2 and stuff like that. Work with people, get to know them, know how they are, invite them to come out, you know, get off the reservations and stuff, and educate them with quality education, that's what makes, you know, productive citizens and stuff. So what we did right here, like I said, we started, I think it was right after December in 2017, we've had like three, four meetings, more or less, just to get to know each other, get what's required from us, and elected me to chairperson, and then we had a meeting two weeks ago, we had a couple more, very informative, one was a teacher and one was a historic, what was it?
Historical society.
Historical society, country, but they're all like from around here, so they got a lot of education behind them on different things to do. One of the things, the teachers' professional development opportunities for the teaching of cultural things for the kids, teaching the teachers, development opportunities of Native American education. And I've talked to the main office in Minneapolis on books and stuff that they might have that, you know, we don't want to jam anything down somebody's throat, but just culturally kind of say, one of the things, my grandson came back right away when he was up here, and one of the teachers was calling him an Indian, and he'd say, "Native American," and she said, "Indian," and he's, "Native American," you know, just stuff like that, you know, "We're not from India, Native American," you know, it's just kind of like a source subject here, but we worked through it, because I'll even say Indian on different things, because it's just kind of embedded in you sometimes. Let's see, in the current curriculum, if we could just get some, like I was talking about different kind of books and stuff, one thing I was talking to, and the guy who runs this place, or the CEO, they was talking about a festa day that they have here, I didn't make it last year, but the whole deal on getting everybody together with the different cultures and everything, and I think they bring food, if you feed them, they will come, I said, it just turned out just fantastic. I had this year for sure, I want to make sure I come to that one there with the kids and stuff, but that's basically what we want to do, you know, just get a little bit of education in there, you know, we're not savages anymore. We're doing, we want to be educated, we want to live off the reservations, because we just don't have that. When I, for my husband first, Matt, he moved me up here, then one of his friends said, I always tell the story because it's just comical, one of his friends told him, "Oh, you don't want to bring that, those people up here, they'll bring their whole family." And so I moved up, February 11th, my house burnt down March 5th, so my son moved up here. In June, my daughter got in trouble, so I had my oldest grandson I got now, so I had to move my grandson up here. My sister got a divorce in September, so she moved up with us with her baby. So within a year's time, we had five of them moving our house, but it's hands up. I mean, we're, they're all living all on their own, they all got jobs, you know, they're all paying their taxes and everything, so just those little hands up to help them get off the reservation, because they don't know what to do down there. I lived there for 36 years, I didn't know anything when I came up here about health insurance, you know, living away from the government paying for things, you know, the health is horrible, you know, like the veterans, how they do in the VA hospitals, and then health is just as bad. But you come up here and you get these little medical cards from your employers, oh my God, it does wonders. But anyway, that's about where we're at.
And I was, no, and I was just going to say, in every year, the committee votes either in concurrence with state statute that the district is meeting the needs of students or against, and this year, the team voted in concurrence saying that the district is doing the best they can to meet the needs of students, and then will be driven by those recommendations that Bernie talked about in the future.
Yes, some of them, we haven't got, even got to that point yet, so we couldn't really say, yes, we did, no, we didn't, or whatever, because we're just now starting.
We're so new.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Awareness is very important, and I really appreciate you being here, and John, I think, you know, we can have this update more than once a year, just to make sure that, you know, as we have several other initiatives within the district that are meant to be inclusive, that we are getting all of our student groups and their communities represented and how we raise the water, we raise the tide for everyone, not just one group or another group, but for everyone, so that all of our students benefit from learning about other cultures and the strength that it gives us. Being a community that has many roots, you're stronger than if you only have one. And so I appreciate very much the work that you've done and look forward to your next visit.
I know we talked about, instead of, every six months, we're moving up to quarterly ones, just so we can kind of get more of our stuff in, all our ducks in a row, so we know, everybody knows what we're doing.
There you go. Very good. All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
Nice to meet you too. And the next information item actually kind of blends a little bit into that with the Addressing Challenges Together Community Engagement Sessions, Dr. Peterson?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair, and so we'll just, we'll quickly provide an overview of that. This is in part a component of our Equity and Engagement work, and you're right, Bernie and John talking about Native American parent advisory. We've been doing a lot of work with our Somali community over the last several years, a lot of which has been happening at Hikma and the Islamic Center in town. Connected to that, we just had a fantastic community engagement session with some of our Hispanic families down at the Mexican Mart over the weekend, and so we are, we are all in, and as our community continues to grow and diversify, what the Addressing Challenges Together series intends to do is to bring all members of our community together to make sure that we're having open and honest dialogue about who we are and where we're going. And so this is one component of our equity work. We had an opportunity to share that with the board through, I believe it was last month, we talked about some professional development that was occurring with our faculty and staff members, that just occurred last Friday, which was very well received, put on by the Greater Mankato Diversity Council. We'll be following up with some faculty meetings, but community engagement is really an opportunity for people not to simply hear what's going on in the school, that's more outreach. Community engagement is, is doing a whole lot of listening, and so we'll have school people there for sure, but a lot of this is intended to be parents, business leaders, community leaders, people who have retired out of the world of work, but, but really have a vested interest in the, the future of St. Peter. And so these sessions will be held at various places in the community. The first one is this Thursday night, March 21st, will be here at the St. Peter Community Center, in the Senior Center. The sessions will be facilitated by not only the Greater Mankato Diversity Council, but also community members who have come forward either through our St. Peter or through the school district and said, "Yeah, I want to, I want to help move this work forward." There'll be three of them. The next one will be in about a week and a half at the, at the fairgrounds, and then the last one will- the last one will wrap up in May at St. Peter Middle School. And that last one is really more of the, okay, we've had some conversation, we kind of see some themes emerging, what do we want to do? How do we continue this work? And as I, I think I maybe said it last month and the admin team is probably getting tired of me saying it, but this equity work is a sentence without a period. This is just a continuation of, of not having one professional development for faculty and say, okay, I think we're good. It has to be weaved through a lot of different components of the school system and community engagement this spring is a part of that as well. So we're really looking, we, we hope we have so many people there, we, we run out of space at the Senior Center. We don't think that'll be a problem at Johnson Hall because that's a very large space. But the outreach to our churches and to people within the business community has been extensive. Really appreciate St. Peter Herald getting the word out, working through social media with St. Peter Public Schools as well. It's going to be a great few sessions and we're really excited about what may come of it.
And those, the first one is March 21st at 6:00 PM. The next one is April the 2nd at 6:00 PM at the fairgrounds. And the final one that's slated so far or thus far is May the 8th at the St. Peter Middle School, all of them at 6:00 PM. And the, it's a really nice little flyer that you might see around and I'm sure that it's a few other places as well on the website. So we'd like to invite anybody who's interested to be there. That gets us through our information item tonight and next thing we have is the reports. Do our principals, the superintendent, the board members.
Well, today was a big day in early childhood and it was a big day because it's a Miss Brenda Day. And so if you remember, we had school readiness classes that were housed right here in the community center, which had easy access to our wonderful public library. And so as we transitioned to the Early Childhood Center, one of the big things that our teachers talked about, we were really going to miss were those visits to the library and the story times and checking out books and getting library cards and all those types of things. So the school readiness teachers took the initiative and contacted the public library and now Miss Brenda comes monthly to, she brings the library to us. So Brenda brings books the kids can check out. Kids signed up for library cards with their parents' permission in the fall of the year and so one Monday a month, Miss Brenda comes and does that and does a big story time. And so this morning I was walking in the hall and I heard someone, one of the kids say, is this a Miss Brenda Day? And I thought, I got to make sure that I report on that because that is a big day. Miss Brenda Day is a great day. Beyond that, last week, we wrapped up our early childhood conferences, our mid-year conferences and so parents had the opportunity to see the progress their children have made throughout the year and then we'll be touching base with families in the spring of the year as well. And really a busy time for us in collecting, getting registrations in. And so we would encourage anyone, I'm just going to put a little plug in, anyone who is still looking for a preschool program, next year we have openings for 3-2 kindergarten aged students and we would encourage them to call our office. And if you register before June 1st, it's the early bird special, which means no registration fee. So give us a call, 934-4211. Are you selling a car? A used car commercial. Well, as long as we're on the registration conversation, we held kindergarten registration night last Thursday night and we had, the gym was full of people and 110 kindergarten students are currently fully enrolled. So we're hoping to add a few more to that throughout the summer, but if there's anyone out there that needs to enroll, their student who will be five by September 1st, all they need to do is go into the early childhood office right off of Broadway and we will get them enrolled and make sure that they get all of the same information that we passed out last Thursday night. Our kindergarten classes have all taken their trip to the Children's Museum now and it really is one of the best field trips. It's one of the only trips that you can tell them, go ahead, touch it, play with it, climb on it and, and just go ahead and be a kid, just don't break it. We still have that. Last Monday night, we had a presentation that was done by Kathy Johnson, our school social worker, along with Carrie Luigi, who is her intern from MSU. And we had a great crowd of parents and the focus was on helping students deal with stress and anxiety and what are some things that they can do at home if they, if their child is exhibiting some of those things. The access tested, testing completed last Friday, so we now await the results so that we can decide what, how do we need to change our programming in order to meet the needs and we can align our instruction for our ELL students. Today, we had an enrichment program by Randy Christensen and it was entitled, I Can Do It. So it really flows nicely with our top 20 programming and it was on doing the best you can, that we all make mistakes and if you, if you make a mistake, you just get back up and try it again and don't ever get up. And in addition to that, I'd like to thank Mrs. Engeldinger for having so many teams go to the state tournament because we are getting really good at hallway send offs. So it has been really fun to be, to have our students included, so, and now it's almost a habit, so I don't know what we're going to do after this Wednesday, but, but, yes. So it's just been really fun to be a part of that as well.
Greetings from Martha Elementary. Seems to be this month, we've had a lot of extra opportunities, whether it be field trips or students taking part in activities like Young Writers Conference, we had about 40 students, third and fourth graders participate in Young Writers Conference, which is a yearly event, it's always at South Central College. Mr. Robinson organizes the volunteers and takes that whole crew over there where kids can dig in a little bit more with the expertise in writing and performances and the arts. And I always love to see them come back in the building about 2:15 with all their creations, very colorful, ready to perform and just kind of, just a spark in their eye. So we really appreciate those, that extra opportunity. Also, we want to thank PTO, they put together, Clime Theater organized a performance group that comes down from the Twin Cities metro area. They presented four shows to our second through fourth grade students. The theme was empathy, understanding other people's perspectives, listening to, you know, their views on things and then geared each one specifically, whether it's second or third or fourth grade, but the theme was empathy and the students had some great feedback and just those, those little monthly, I guess extras allow students to develop kind of that hidden curriculum that we always call just like the, the socialization skills, the empathy, the understanding of each other. So we, we thank PTO for doing that. Fourth grade, all fourth grade headed to South Central on March 6th, they went to the Water Festival and that's an activity that's been going on for many decades. Brown County puts that together, just talks about the importance of water, which is a standard in fourth grade, the water cycle, how important water is in our lives, how to protect it and what it's all used for. So great to see students digging in and getting a little, at least maybe dirt, maybe wet, not a lot dirty, but they definitely get wet with bubbles around them and rain clouds that they're making, all sorts of things. So, and then the last item is actually kindergarten through eighth grade, we have conferences, the scheduler just opened up today, so kindergarten through eighth grade students get online, our families, register online to take part in conferences, which are a little bit later than usual this year, 28th of March and then the 5th and 6th of April, 4th or 5th, off by a couple days.
Thank you, sir. It's been a busy month, busy last couple of weeks here at the middle school. On March 8th, we had our presentation of Alice's Adventure in Wonderland. The, the students put on three shows, two during the day for our student population and then one at night for the general public. We had 45 kids roughly participate that, in that, and that, that number's about double from last year. The decision was made early on in the year by our play directors to include the fifth and sixth grade and it definitely paid off. A lot of those students helped with the crew and creating of the, of the stage presence and it definitely, definitely showed. So lots of excitement with that department and really hoping to build that. There's even talks of, I shouldn't even say this out loud, but even talks of maybe doing a musical in years to come at the middle school. So we're going to need to build a new theater at the middle school. Last week also, we had three concerts at the Performing Arts Center. We had fifth and sixth grade band, seventh and eighth grade band and seventh and eighth grade choir. Got conferences coming up with Mr., with which Mr. Doherty talked about. And then our sixth graders are preparing for round two of Biz Town. They're planning on heading there April 1st. On February 27th, they, I think they got about as far as La Sure and then decided this isn't going to work due to weather and came back. So the rescheduling of that is April 1st. And then finally, I just want to say congratulations to Eric Bo and Laura D. Those guys are definitely pillars of the Saints community and of course, they've taught students a ton of things, but, but they've also taught me a ton, so good luck to them and they're definitely going to be missed.
We, we certainly have our, our, our own March Madness happening at the high school. There's no lack of, of action going on with our high school kids and I just want to, first of all, thank all of our staff and teachers, but especially our activities office. Though Pam Baker and Jordan Paula have been working their tails off in, in recent months, actually. One state tournament, tournament to, to plan and, and pull off is, is a lot, to say nothing of three. So we're, we're off to the boys' basketball tournament on Wednesday. Girls were there last week and our boys' hockey team was there the previous week. We had individuals going in wrestling and in gymnastics. So it's been, it has been so much fun and I think when, when this whole season is done, a lot of people just may collapse from a little bit of exhaustion, but it is, it's been crazy fun. So a, a thank you to Jordan and Pam especially. We also have choir concert tonight, so we appreciate the pace that this, that this meeting has been going. A lot of us have kids participating in that and are just big fans. The band had their co- spring concert last week, which was a phenomenal show. And then I also want to, want to talk about an event that happened today, Crave, the Culinary Arts Regional Venue in Education, was an event hosted in conjunction with St. Peter Schools, La Sure and Mankato and the Service Cooperative at the Courtyard by Marriott. And kids participated in culinary competitions similar to a Top Chef by category and kids who were not competing, who were in Culinary Arts One, also attended, attended speakers, you know, similar to concurrent events or concurrent sessions if you were going to a, a conference. And that, it, for the first time event, it was, it was amazing. So thank you to, to a lot of people who put that on, but at St. Peter, that would be Amanda Pagacznik, Mandy Quist, Jenna Sikora and Corey Adlin. Was a really neat event.
Questions for any of our principals this evening? I heard a rumor that we're talking about taking up crew now that we have a lake.
Yeah, we've got some, some lakeshore property up at the high school. We may have seen some kayakers out there last Friday.
Bob wanted fishing.
I did. Looking at stocking it.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Peterson?
Yes, very quickly, just a few things to report on. Few weeks ago, it seemed like a, a great school year to, to be highlighting the, the accomplishments of our bus drivers, bus, bus driver appreciation. They, you know, there's been a lot of weather and a lot of schedules and a lot of things that have been disruptive and those guys and gals who have been driving those buses have been steady. Saints Bus is just an exceptional partner on the phone with them, early mornings, late nights, talking about roads and keeping kids safe. But those drivers, every morning, they're, they're spot on, they're on time and, and if they're not going to be, there's communication with the district and we try to get that information out as quickly as we can. So really appreciate everybody's work with that. We moved then from winter into spring and a lot of buzz and a lot of activity with our principals and their work related to flooding. All of our buildings are on the watch list and Mark Bachman and his crew, along with the principals and the staff, have had to make some adjustments, modifications based on what's been coming in the building. And some of that stuff isn't so great right now. It's not, it's not sizable or significant, but we certainly know that we're only at March 18th right now and there's more to come. And you know, as you said, they, the, behind St. Peter High School at CSP Park, that water is just a little indication as to what's coming out the bluff line and we're, we're working as, as best we can. There's some specific areas, the, the middle school media center, looking at some sandbagging behind, you know, at the, at the base of that hill. This isn't, this wouldn't be the only, the first year that we've done that, that's, that's happened quite a few times. But, but definitely with the new high school out there, there's some water patterns that we're watching very closely with the city, taking our drone up to take a look at where, where, where is the water going and what might we be looking at futuristically to help guide it in a way that helps us minimize some damage. So I know that you wanted to maybe speak a, a word or two about flooding as well.
Well, yeah, just to, you know, the, that whole entire site, when we put it together, it was graded in such a way to do what it's doing right now. It was set up so that if, if we did have an overrun of surface moisture, that it would move into certain areas and, and be held there and then slowly evacuate over time. And so the system is doing what it's supposed to be doing. We just don't know what the capacity of that system is or, or what the outcome long term will be. But we have people who are keenly aware and, and watching every day, twice a day. I know there's people out checking and working to improve water flow in the ways that they can and still provide access to those neighbors out there who have to get up and down some of those roads to get to their houses. But it is, it is quite a bit different than, you know, the last great flood of 1965. We've, our community has grown and we've changed many things, from how high roads are to where roads are, where buildings are, homes and developments. And so the way the water went 50 years ago isn't necessarily going to be the way the water goes this year or in future years. And we may never see this again, but we are now. And so we're thankful for the cooperation with the city and, and township and county personnel and you're, you know, the kids are safe and schools are functioning the way that they're supposed to. And we just get to, get to enjoy the rites of spring in Minnesota. And it looks like, you know, we're, I'm not going to say we're through the worst of it, but we're, we're in pretty good shape for what we could have had or could have experienced, so, you know. And nature usually wins at some point in time. And that's why we've got, I think every one of our buildings has got some water in it And, and those we've seen before. There's nothing new occurring. And our roofs are all good and things like that, so, pretty good that way. Anything else, Dr. Peterson?
That is it, thank you.
And for those kids that want to kayak, I mean, I know you got your picture and everything was cool, but it's, it's probably not something to do a second time. Or to encourage others might not be the best of ideas. So if we can stay out of the, stay out of that area so that nobody gets hurt and we don't encourage people who aren't maybe as skillful to do some things that would cause issues later, we just let nature run its course. We'll let you know when the park's open and you can get back out there and enjoy it. With that, board members.
Yes, I, when we were at the conference in January, I was approached by a couple of ladies that they wanted me to join the, it's called the Elected Women of Southern Minnesota. And so what it is, is it's just a bunch of the people who have been elected to office and we meet. And so because of the snowstorms, they canceled twice and so last week was the first one I got to attend. And it was very interesting. And it was very interesting, and a lot of opportunities to join other committees and, but it was, it's something I think I'm gonna keep going to, it was very interesting, so.
Mankato or?
Yeah, Mankato, well, they kind of meet all over. We went to the Wow Zone and had lunch, and then the, one time they were gonna go up to the Cupcake Place, what is that? Oh. Yes, yes, so, and they just kind of meet all over the place, and it's pretty interesting. Sherry, the superintendent from Mankato, was one of them who approached me about joining. So it was really, it's pretty interesting, so.
Glad you're here.
Yeah, I got two things. First, I want to apologize to the board chair and the rest of the board for being late. I informed the superintendent and chair that I was gonna be a little late. And sometimes life happens when you're coaching three, twenty-three college-age women. So I apologize for that. And secondly, because I wasn't here for the consent agenda, I know one of the items involves my childhood babysitter. Now, I'm from Hutchinson, so it's weird, because she's younger than me, and yet she babysat me, but. Becky Gravo, formerly known as Becky Scar, when she was my babysitter, I was a terror for her. I would run away constantly just to, just because it was fun to make her have to chase me. And I think she, it's always interesting, the people that are behind the scenes that, that really keep things moving in the right direction. And I think Becky, in, in her position, has done a great service to both the superintendent and administrators, but especially the board and especially myself. I think she's, I don't think she expected to have to babysit me when I was as old as I am, but she has done that admirably for the past five years. So congratulations, Becky, and good luck.
You're not the only one who sends me texts out, and I need something.
Sounds good.
Ben?
Thank you, Ben.
Very proud of the Saints lately, a lot of achievements. All the sports have gone to state, and we've had Accadex, and we were involved with the mock trial. I know that the pep bands have been there keeping things going, and our student sections at the games have been boisterous, lively, but above the line. I think they've been doing a great job. It's been just a very fun time to be a Saint, and I'm very proud of everyone and their achievements.
Yeah, I had to break out the colors for tonight. The last thing that I would add is that MVET is, announced their search for a new director, and is also finishing up with a project to put together a mission, vision, and go-forward statement for that organization to guide them for the next couple of years, and to also provide some framework for a new leader that is, is gonna come into that role, hopefully before June. And so that process is moving along nicely. The third meeting in the strategic planning type of process occurs tomorrow evening. And at that time, they'll be bringing it, bringing some things together, and we'll share those back with all the respective districts that participate, and begin to look at what kind of applications we're getting for replacement director there, in a very key role for quite a few students. You know, our seven districts represent a huge geographic area, something on the order of eleven hundred and thirty-five kids, I think, are getting service out of that co-op. It is a very significant component of education within our district and, and other districts as well. So just to let you know where that's, where that's at. If we don't have anything else from board members?
Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. What wine I had after practice?